Build sure, and I already told these guys, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my part really fast and then book out my daughters flying in from Arizona and her plane is actually landing pretty quickly here.
Absolutely.
She might be just chilling at the airport for a minute.
Okay, sounds great. So how about we get started? So we'll call to order the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees meeting for December. First thing, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? No. Uh, don't see anybody logged on for public comments. And then for approval of the minutes, were there any, anything noted in the November, maybe minutes that need updated or changed? Does anybody want to make a motion to pass the November meeting minutes?
I make one motion.
Perfect, in a second?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so those pass, and then let's go right on to Jenny's report. How's that sound?
Um, so the financial report looks about the same as it always does, although I think, I mean, every month we kind of level off a little bit more, so we're sitting pretty well. Sorry, my screen is not, I got it, I got my thing too big for my whole screen, there we go. So thirty-nine point eight-four percent, which is good, I mean, for the full, for the bottom line, we forty-one point something is the point six-six or something like that is the average right now. I'm not scrolling down far enough to see that point forty-one point six-seven, so we're sitting well overall and starting to average out a little bit in the, in the commodities line, the, the services and commodities, our personnel looks good. The, we are still trying to figure out why part-time rate wages are so high because actually Jen makes a really concerted effort to stay within our budget with the part-time salaries. We're not exactly sure, we have had two five-week pay periods, but that shouldn't have affected that, so we aren't sure if they just under-budgeted us for us a little bit, but again, it's the bottom line, so we're not super concerned at this point. And then, does anyone have questions about the budget?
No.
Specifically? All right, then I will move right into the staffing update. We have been working in teams for the last couple of months, we are shifting back to full office on January fourth. We will not be opening right away to go back to browsing hours, we'll see how things are looking in January and kind of start making that decision as we go. And Erin can tell you a little bit more about another group, we're gonna be welcoming in that she's really excited about. When she's up, we just had a meeting today, so we're excited to welcome another small group into the library, that's the things we miss the most probably right now is that, we're not still having meetings, but if we can do things to help with the educational piece, that's where we're looking at. We are hiring an information technology coordinator with the city, that person will do eighty percent city time and twenty percent library, so they'll actually have two bosses. I was a little hesitant about that, but they've assured me that it will be fine. I had just said I would step back and let someone else be the boss as long as they were willing to work with me, and they thought that that person should answer to me for the library portion at least, so we will see someone move, and they're gonna be housed in our office in Janet's former office in the back room, so they'll be on, on call for us all the time, even though they're doing a lot, the majority of their work will be citywide work. They will still, part of their job description is helping out at the library, helping patron questions as far as technology goes. And so we'll ask, and I hope that they will learn just a little bit about how the library operates as far as patron, the patron end of things. I think that's gonna be a really important piece, is finding someone with the right personality for the, this position. It's gonna be a lot of growth in that position, and a lot of room to continue growing as we develop more and get more busy in our network and our, our library and city keeps expanding. So we're excited about that, we are just now selecting candidates to interview, which is a little bit challenging. Scott, they did suggest that maybe I should talk to you and tap into you for that. My husband, I didn't think would want to, and he actually said that he would be interested in doing that, in helping us out if we needed any help, so I think we might be set, but the next thing, so we're gonna continue, as I said, looking at that service plan and what we look like, if we can open to browsing again, we will do so as soon as we're safe to do that. I'll tell you, it's been really interesting, we have seen so many new patrons signing up for library cards online. I mean, we're talking four, five, six a day, which I don't know if it's because we're now getting these different notifications, that was always happening, but when we started looking through it, then we realized that there's a lot of new patrons in the system who've never had their cards completely registered, they just get this new notice and then they don't do anything else, so we've started mailing those out, Kelly's reaching out to every one of those people, and now she's gonna do that in retrospect back to March to catch some people that we may have missed who maybe were trying to do something and then just never reached back out. So we're, I'm interested to know what's going on. We do get a spike in December typically because people get devices and want to use the technology and the ebooks and e-content. So we typically see a little spike, but this has been really interesting. We haven't done a full count yet to see where we are. But it's looking interesting, so Andrew is working on getting some new book carousels up, I think he's done with those and is working on some other new book things, displays and things, because we did have a patron say how much she missed browsing the new bookshelves, and so he's gonna be doing some videos with new books, some talks and things like that to just try to get the, and I told him to feel free to recruit other staff members to help him with that, just to try to let people know what's available as we continue to not be open. I am super excited about the next piece, which is, we met with Sam Jarvis, who's a community health manager for the Jones County Public Health la, this last month, and talked about how the library could assist with disseminating information about the vaccine, helping the public understand the vaccine, kind of combating misinformation, we're really excited about this partnership. And it started, I was asked by someone through the Association of Rural and Small Libraries, someone recommended that this person contact me to see if I would want to serve on an advisory board for a grant on libraries as second responders, or that being the middle, kind of the middle person between different organizations within the community and helping be a vehicle for people to find the information they need. Because sometimes we don't have the answers, but sometimes we deliver the answers in a different way, or get someone to the, where they need to be to get those answers, and I think as we grow, we need to understand that more and more that we're not always gonna be the end, we're gonna be that middle road person. So Amy is also involved in that. I, I kind of said, oh, Amy would be really good at that, and she said, actually, you would both be great. So we both got stuck doing it, which is fine, I'm looking at the big picture of the grant and kind of advising on that, like what types of people we'd work with, and those things where Amy's gonna be on the ground doing some work on that grant. Probably her piece is gonna be a little more rigorous than mine, she'll be reviewing, like they're, they want to do trainings for libraries, small libraries, to teach them how to do this, so she'd be helping review that training piece. We had a legislative reception, which if you guys got my email in a panic, I was like, oh my gosh, I failed to send the email, it was like the biggest fail. I typically send that out a couple days before, I was in charge of the slides and I was under so much gun to get those darn slides, and don't ask me why I volunteered to do them, but I did. They all came together, they are included, so you guys couldn't review them, and we had a nice crowd of legislators and one or two county folks, so it was a nice group. Lots of staff, our staff and every staff person was there from all the libraries, which was nice, so we could actually kind of just talk about what we're doing during the pandemic, but also talk about what we've been doing overall, and, and we got some really good reception to that, our legislators were impressed with what we've done. And in fact, one of the legislators says, so many, you know, all these frontline people and healthcare workers are getting so much attention, but really you guys are right there with them. So it was nice that they recognized that, that was pretty exciting. And I even heard from a legislator that we don't typically hear from after the fact, he did not make it to the thing, but he did email me to say that he was thankful to have the slide, so that was next. We finished our community report, which is also included in the packet. We, it was a harder report to do this year, obviously, we normally are showing off our cool stuff and our numbers, and when you look at the numbers this year, they look a little different with, you know, the last several, the last quarter of the year being a different, different from what it's ever been. So we, we focused on some different things, then we kind of used Cedar Rapids as a model for it. They had a really nice report, and so we kind of modeled after that, and then kind of went our own way on some things too. That I am working on the annual contribution letter, we decided to do a different route this year, which is asking, doing the friends and the endowment in one letter. So it's a little bit challenging both to balance how that's gonna look, I've been working on it for several weeks, just trying to figure out what it's gonna look like. And then, not only what it's gonna look like, but who does it go to? So when I started looking through, but in the past, we've done two different letters, we've sent them to two different groups of people, we've had to cross-check everything to make sure they're not going to the same, you know, two people aren't getting, or one person isn't getting the same two letters. So what, I had Andrew run a report for me, thinking it would be really nice to include active patrons who've stayed active through the pandemic. That list is over almost three thousand people. That's a little bigger than what I wanted, so I started going through that today. First I got to the Bs, and then I started doing some different things to cut the list a little bit more, so I think I'm at like sixteen hundred now. So still, we don't, we're leaning away at it, but hopefully, I was really hoping to get that out in December, although we've always done it in the spring, we just didn't do one in two thousand twenty, so, and I think that's okay. So we're just changing that to a fiscal year letter and probably send it out in January instead. Databases, super excited, Erin was excited about this one too, we have Help Now, which is a new tutoring database that I told you guys about, in the first month it had over three hundred ninety uses. We aren't sure, we're still trying to learn how to read that report, but, but that looks like legit uses of by three, or three hundred ninety different times people use that database in that first month from what I am gathering. And I think what Erin can attest to. And then the second one is we're getting CloudLink in the cloud app, which I kind of talked about last month, we went through the first training process of that this week, more introductory stuff, and then we'll go through collection, Andrew will go through some correct collection training, and then there's a marketing training. So they'll do basically four weeks of training with us each week, and then they're available after that continually. The group that has that database is also a group of librarians, so they've done it really well for libraries, they know what we're looking for. I think it's made it, I'm, I'm pretty excited, we're gonna be one of the, I think, we're, one of the first six or so libraries in the state to have it. Could be a little more than that, but the metro libraries share it up in Cedar Rapids, and then Orange City and Central City have it, so that's it so far, but they're really wanting to get into Iowa and see what they can do here, so I'm pretty excited that we'll be involved in that. And the app is really cool, I think I might have told you guys about it last time, but patrons can actually use their phone with their library card on it, they can check out books as they walk through the library on their phone. So they're already checked out, their phone is like a little mini, mini self-check, and then when they want to bring them back, they can put them all in a basket by scanning them on their phone again, so that they know they have everything, so those folks that check out thirty or so primary fiction books and are searching madly for them through their house can hopefully find all of them. And then I'm, I talked a little bit about that library first responders or second responders grant already, so we'll see how that goes. I will also am agreed, I'm super excited about it actually, to serve on the Government Affairs Committee for the Iowa Library Association, I, that is a committee that I have not been on in the past. They monitor the legislative action that happens in libraries and is impacting libraries throughout the year, so I'm pretty excited to, to serve on that this year. We did ILA virtual planning this month, and then Erin and I and Emily and Jennifer and Amy attended Access to Justice, which was an all-day conference that was offered by the Eastern Iowa Mediation Group, it was a really, really good conference with a lot of good information, we just got the recordings for that. I'm, I'm kind of excited to go back and watch a couple of those pieces of that, that's the sessions that I was most interested in, and I had to step out at the end for another meeting, so I missed the last session, so I'm excited to go back and watch that one. And then finally, we met, I met with a leadership committee that's involved in the annual leadership institution that we do every year, institute that we do every year through the Iowa Library Association, and we have determined that we're going to do some, some virtual thing, but it's not gonna be the intense leadership institute that we've done in the past, unfortunately. And then I was asked by a group in Wisconsin called Wild Wisconsin Conference to do a policy session in January, so I've just started working on that a little bit. So been interesting, it's been another crazy month in the library. And then I have all the reports from the different staff, I don't know if you have any specific questions about any of those or about my report? Nothing?
The one thing, if any help is needed with the COVID vaccine information, feel free to rope me in.
Yes, you are gonna be right in the midst of it, aren't you Heidi?
So, happy to help.
Great, all right, thank you. All right.
Thanks Jenny.
You bet, thank you guys, I'm gonna cut out and let Erin take over.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to all of you, hey Erin, would you just make a note of, about how long and kind of a, just send me an email about how long and a little bit about what you talked about?
Uh, yeah.
For the training database, or the training dashboard that we keep?
Yes.
Awesome, have a great night, guys.
Thanks, you too.
Um, so I feel like this was kind of when Jenny said that she was leaving, she's like, just talk and it'll be fine, and I was like, okay, so I don't know how long I'm supposed to talk to you guys. Do you have like a general timeframe?
We, we don't, it's just whatever you want to share about all the cool things you're doing, we love to hear about it.
Well, I feel like we have not been doing anything cool lately. And I know that our, like Kayla and I's reports to you guys are like so boring now, because we're like, yes, we put together kits and we gave them out, and that's what we did. But, uh, so the group that we met with today, the, it's called G World, G apostrophe, or not apostrophe, exclamation point world, and it's a group that I believe started with like the neighborhood centers in Iowa City, and they have little school groups at West and especially at City, that's where it started, and then North Central. They kind of had a group going after school at Liberty finally, and they were a group that like I knew about, but didn't, I wasn't sure how to like get in with them, but whatever, COVID happened, but anyways, they sent an email out last week about wanting to know if they could use our space for a group because they had some interest from some of the North Liberty Girls, and so it's like a mentoring type place for girls of color, and it's where they can work out some issues if they have any, and get some mentoring, and they do like, you know, like group building exercises and things like that, so they have had several of the SFAs in the schools like recommend that they get one going again in North Liberty during COVID, so they're waiting until they have enough girls, which at this point would be, I think they want six, six to eight girls, because then they have two to four adults, depending on how many kids, so they keep it to like ten, so we already have the the Neighborhood Nest that meets on Wednesdays with Tyson, and so it's, it's kind of like that, but they want to come on Mondays, so I'm really excited because we don't often see a lot of teens A in the library that are like high school age, and B, we don't, I don't know, it, I just, I just want them to know that the, the library in general is a space that they can belong in, and so I think this is a good step to getting us there. And it's just nice that, you know, that there's already a group in existence and that we can kind of pigeonhole in there instead of trying to create something totally new that we're not necessarily going to be successful at, so I'm really happy about that. So, uh, that being said, that kind of actually segues into what I was gonna talk about. So I've done various presentations about this topic, so I did it for the Kids First Conference in the spring, and then presented it virtually for the ARSL Conference, but was kind of talking a little bit about how the library is now working with kids and how beneficial I think that's been, even though it's been a challenge for some of the staff, just kind of learning new ways to do things with kids instead of just like kicking them out when they're being obnoxious. So I'm just gonna kind of talk about what I've done with that. And a lot of it focuses on trauma, and you know, we've had different trainings over the past couple of years about trauma with like a social worker, but then I've also attended other online webinars and things that have to do with with trauma and how that affects people. I mean, it's something that when I, you know, when I initially thought about trauma, I think about like big T trauma, like, oh, I was in a car accident, or you know, somebody got shot, or there was an earthquake, that's, that sort of thing, and I've learned that the trauma is, it's so much more than that, and it's, it can be really little, but it's impactful, so so trauma is basically, it's an event or a series of events or circumstances that's experienced by someone. It's experiences physically or emotionally harmful or life-threatening, and it has lasting effects. So it's the event, it's the person's experience of an event, and then it's the effect of that. And it can be, you know, anything from like your, your dog dying or your cat dying, which seems like kind of a little deal, but it's actually can be a really big deal. To bigger life things like abuse, being abandoned, a death of a loved one, community violence, bullying, you know, life-threatening national, natural disasters. You know, living in a chronically chaotic environment and poverty, and of course, like racism. So, uh, those are, those are some of the things that can cause trauma, and then the effects can be physical, emotional, and also social. And this is where I feel like, you know, we see a lot in libraries, so and teachers obviously are gonna see this in the classroom, but you know, physical symptoms like stomach aches and headaches, and you can't sleep, and your immune system is terrible. You know, chronic asthma, I feel like that is definitely a thing that affects people that are low income a lot. And then, you know, being able or unable to control your emotions and just being overwhelmed by sadness or anger or frustration, that is definitely an effect, it can be an effect of trauma. Not being able to focus, process information. And then other things that play out, I think, at the library, protective of personal space and personal items, which we, I, I would, that was kind of a light bulb one for me, because I was like, okay, so when you ask a kid to leave their backpack by the desk or give you their basketball, because that's a big one in the library because of the gym, and they're like, no. Well, you know, it's probably, you know, it could be because they've moved around a lot, or they've had their things stolen, or they've, you know, just that's like their one possession that they actually own, and they don't want to give it up for fear of it never coming back to them, so that was one thing that we really focused on, which seems strange, but it makes sense later. Fighting when criticized or teased and not being good with transitions or change, impulsive behavior, things like that, so sometimes it can be hard to suss out what is like typical kid, pre-teen teen behavior versus what is, you know, the effect of trauma, and then how it can all be interrelated. It's, it's, it's complex. So, um, I don't know if you guys know about like ACES, it's the Adverse Childhood Experience questionnaire, and you can find it online if you just Google, you know, ACES test or whatever, and it's a, it's a group of ten questions, and like the higher you score on the ACES, the like more trauma you've had in your life, it doesn't necessarily predict the kind of outcome you're gonna have as an adult, but it can be kind of something to keep in mind when you're dealing with kids, and the, the questions, it's during the first eighteen years of your life, you know, did a parent or other adult in the household often swear you, insult you, put you down, or humiliate you, or act in a way that might make you afraid to be physically hurt? And did a parent or guardian in the household often push, grab, slap, or throw something at you, or ever hit you so hard that you had marks or were injured? Did an adult or person at least five years older than you ever touch you in a sexual way? Or otherwise sexually abused you? Did you often feel that no one in your family loved you or thought you were important, or that your family didn't look out for each other? And then did you often feel that you didn't have enough to eat, had to wear dirty clothes? Or your parents were too drunk or high to take care of you or take you to the doctor? Were your parents ever separated or divorced? So it's pretty easy that at least probably over half of us can, we have at least one ace. And then the other ones are, like, did you witness violence towards your mother or stepmother? If you live with anyone who is a problem drinker or alcoholic or a street drug user. Number nine is a household member who is depressed or mentally ill or attempted suicide, and then the tenth question is, did a household member go to prison? So you total those all up, and then you see your ACES score, and it's, it's just a tool, but it is kind of eye-opening to, to read those things and think about the, for us at le, or for me at least, the kids and teens in the community. Because we do have child, child abuse, and I was just looking at some statistics before we started, and I think Johnson County this year, for, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen, had like a fifty-four percent like founded or confirmed abuse of kids under the age of eighteen, which you can find that at DHS.Iowa.gov if you're really interested. And they, they have all kinds of ways that they break it down, but you know, it's not a huge number, but it's also not insignificant if you think about our population and like at least, you know, a hundred or so, give or take, of kids have experienced abuse or neglect of some kind. And that a lot of those kids are the ones that we used to see at least in the library, I hope that they come back at some point. So when we deal with kids, we need to kind of change our frame of reference, instead of thinking about them as being loud and obnoxious and uncontrollable, you know, thinking more like, okay, what is the chance that they could be experiencing? You know, poverty or, you know, some sort of event that could cause trauma? And maybe some better ways to think about our interactions with them, so that they, that they do know that they're valued and that they do know that the library is a safe space for them, because you can say that all you want, but if your actions don't back that up, it doesn't really matter. So, you know, we, we've tried really hard to think about like a trauma-informed approach when it comes to our like a trauma informed approach when it comes to our low uh, low key policies and procedures, um, the ones that like aren't written out in the manual, but that we all know how to do. Um, so some of those things just, um, you know, for our organization is just realizing that um, you know, that there is a wide in a widespread impact of trauma in our community and this is gonna be, I mean, I'm kind of afraid uh, and nervous and anxious about, you know, when things return to normal. Um, what the kids are gonna be like because this COVID thing this is a trauma that we're all going through and, you know, some of us have good coping skills, some of us don't, some kids are super resilient. Some aren't gonna be so resilient and I, I just, I have no idea what to expect when um, you know, we open back up fully again. Um, I'm hopeful that it will be fine, but also um, it will be a good reminder, probably put up some post-it notes in the back room to be like, remember, we all just suffered a big trauma. So, you know, we gotta think about that. And also like, you know, it doesn't matter where you fall on the political spectrum. This whole election thing um, is that is a traumatic event, I think, that that will have repercussions for a long time, so. Need to realize that that is happening in our community, which I think most of us do, but you know, to kind of keep that in the forefront of our brains. Um, and then uh, that we can recognize the signs and symptoms of trauma um, in our in our public and that we respond by thinking um, and acting um, and using our knowledge about trauma, um, when we have our policies and procedures or practices or our interactions, that that's just kind of at the forefront. And then that we resist re-traumatizing people. Um, that's a big one for the trauma informed approach and thinking. Um, okay, so I'm gonna skip over some of this because it's not really relevant. Okay, so specifically when we were working with youth, um, I don't know if y'all remember back to twenty eighteen, um, I'm not sure who was on the library board, but um, that was the summer that um, that's the Emily went on maternity leave. Caroline, who was the youth and teen assistant, um, left us. Uh, Mitch came into our life and um, we had a super problematic family that just caused all sorts of chaos and not just in the library, but in the rec center at the um, free lunch program a- at their apartment complex. It was a mess and we just we handled it very poorly, um, but in our defense, there's also a lot going on. Um, I had pinched a nerve actually and was taking um, some kind of medication that was definitely not good for my brain and functioning, so it was like, it was, it was cra- it was chaos. Um, and then that family like abruptly left and moved back to where they had come from and like, we, we all kind of realized that we needed to like rethink a lot of the ways that we handled things. And so that's when we started to get involved with um, UAY and their training and that was very helpful and um, so we've really tried with like every new employee and especially the part-time people because um, you know, the kids are around in the evenings and on the weekends and the part-time staff is definitely, as Scott can attest, uh, they are there, um, you know, sometimes more often than the full-time staff, so we definitely like to train them in this way of thinking as well. Um, so, you know, one of the things we really try hard to do is make a relationship um, with the kids and get to know them. Um, so the, the easiest ways that we have to do that are, um, you know, with the snacks. Um, and we make them talk to us, we give them things to eat. Um, it's really easy because, you know, they're, they're a captive audience. Um, and then the question of the week board that we do. Um, so that is a really easy way for us to get to know their names because when they answer the question, they have to write their name down on their little um, uh, answer sheet. And that's partly so that we know that they've already done it, but then also it reinforces what their name is to us. Um, and then uh, I took all of their pictures um, of our regular, regular kids and put them up um, on a poster board in the staff room with their names and then also like who they were related to. Um, and I think that was really helpful for the staff. The public didn't see that. When I tell that to the librarians, there's always people that freak out. They're like, oh, my god, you took their pictures? Did you get their parents' permission? Did you, you know, who was seeing those? And I'm like, it's okay, it's just us in the back room. I don't think I will ever meet most of these people's parents or guardians, so I, I think it's fine. Um, you know, and the kids don't care. They're like, yeah, take my picture, it's fine. Um, and I explained to them what we were gonna use it for. I was like, you know, this is gonna help the staff get to know your names and so they thought that was fine. Um. Uh, so those are some of the easy ways that we, you know, get to know people. Um, we try to catch the kids being good, which is like a, a parenting tip that I learned a, a long time ago from my mother-in-law when my son was two and was a holy terror. Uh, she's like, you gotta catch him being good. And then, you know, that reinforces that behavior. I'm like, okay. Uh, so we try, you know, really hard to thank them when they're doing the behaviors that we want. Um, we try to talk calmly and politely to them and be specific. So if there's a behavior that they're doing that we are um, not so fond of, we will use their name and then instead of just say, you know, stop doing that, we'll say, hey, you know, your voice is a little loud, can we like tap it down a little bit? And that works much better than just collectively yelling, stop. Um, and remembering that, like, it isn't about us. Um, which is really hard to not take some of the things they do and say personally. Um, I repeat that to myself a lot. It's not about me, it's not about me. They could have had a bad day, they could have, you know, like, somebody could have made fun of their shoelaces or whatever and they're just reacting to the first person that they come in contact with that's, you know, telling them to change their behavior. Um, now it's really hard. Uh, and one of the things that um, Talia and Ally from UAY really emphasized was that like kids are not automatically gonna respect you. You've gotta, you have to work to earn it. And that's definitely a hard concept for um, some people to embrace. Um, because, you know, just because you're the adult does not mean that they're automatically going to respect you, just does not work that way. And you have to give it if you wanna get it. And also remembering the kids' brains are not fully formed until they're like twenty-five to twenty-seven years old, which is frightening. Um, the first time I got married, I was twenty-two and I was like, why didn't anybody tell me? Like, my brain wasn't fully formed, they should have said, stop. We didn't know those things back then, though. Um, so we have a flow chart of like behaviors um, that we have up well, we had up in the workroom when we had people that were in the library. And it's been really helpful for addressing minor behaviors, so like, if things are just starting to interfere with like other people in the library, like talking too loud, um, playing their music too loud, um, making messes, that kind of thing. If they're physically intimidating people or, you know, that kind of behavior, obviously, that's not what we're talking about, but um, just those like annoyances that kids do. So we have um, a flow chart that uh, you know, this is how we like staff to handle things, so we um, like our example is like a group of kids are talking too loudly, so we'll go over and be like, hey, it sounds like everybody's having a lot of fun over here. It's just a little bit loud, like, what are you guys talking about? Wow, 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 and we're like, okay, that, that's great. We just need you to bring the noise level down a little bit. Um, we thank them and then, you know, if the behavior stops, hooray! We can go back over and be like, hey, thanks so much for keeping your voices down, it's really great. Um, we're so happy that you're excited about whatever it is you're talking about and that you can police yourselves. Um, if it continues, we kind of do the same approach, but then we say, you know, hey, if we have to, you know, um, you know, come over again, we may have to ask you um, to leave for the day. We really want you to be here, we really want you to stay, um, but, you know, just keep that in mind. And, you know, sometimes I'll be like, it seems like you guys have a lot of energy. Maybe you need to run around the building two times and like, I'll give you a piece of candy when you come back. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. Um, if it's like, one of the things that I was also trying was like, if it was just really chaotic and crazy, just taking a group down to the gym um, and just letting them run around the gym for a minute or two. Um, I had to kind of work with um, Matt and Zach down at the rec center to get their okay because I'm like, I'm not gonna pay for these kids to come in. Period. And, you know, we'll be here for two minutes under my supervision, but they need to get their, you know, ya-yas out before everyone has a meltdown and uh, you know, and that was, that was okay. Um, I haven't really had to do that, but that is an option as well. Um, the third time, then we say, okay, you know, it's, you've just had a really hard time being able to keep your voices down. Um, so since I'm having to ask again, we're gonna have to ask you to leave for the day. And then the important part is to say, take a few minutes to get your things and say goodbye to your friends and you know, we'll see you back tomorrow. Um, and then the most important part of that is then the next day when um, you see them and if, if it's like me to ask them to leave to, and I'm not there, um, is to make sure to tell Kayla or um, somebody to follow up with the kid when they come back and be like, hey, it's really good to see you back. Um, I know yesterday we had to ask you to leave and that was a bummer, but we're really happy to see that you're back. How was your day? Um, so that you're re-establishing that connection with them um, and, and building that relationship so that they know like, just because they screwed up once, it's not the end of the world and that they can come back and you know, and, and it, it works okay. So that's like, that's kind of the gist of how we're trying to handle things instead of just being like, okay, you know, like serenity, you're out of here. I don't wanna see you again for a week. Um, because I think that there was times where it was like that. Um, and, you know, when you're overwhelmed and no one's listening and and again, you don't have that relationship with the kids, it's really easy to just kick them out because you're tired and you don't wanna deal with them and um, I get that, but we're also trying to, to not be that way anymore, so. Um, and then, um, you know, one of the things that I had recommended um, doing these presentations was when we did, um, when Kristen, um, our social work practicum student was with us. We set up a bunch of role-playing scenarios that we did with the staff and that was really fun. Um, and we used examples of things that happened in the library a lot, like, you know, kids bouncing a basketball, what do you do? You know, and uh, it was, it was super fun to be able to, to do that and then have the um, have the staff kind of like think about what we just talked about and then how they would approach the situation and um, you know, go from there and, you know, and I felt like we were, we were definitely in a really good place. Um, we just started um, focusing on the tweens a lot because they were, you know, they're gonna be the teens soon and um, getting a group going with uh, Ariana from UAY to kind of focus on kind of like what G World does is kind of like a mentoring thing and then like have them plan programs for the library and then, you know, COVID happened and that's, that's where we are, so. I am assuming that when things go, go back and we have people and programs again, that we're gonna have to start all over from square one and um, I'm really hoping that most of our regulars uh, come back. I don't know, um, I know one of our families is definitely fighting an eviction and maybe moving to Iowa City, um, which makes me sad, uh, but you know, we can only do so much. Um, so, I don't know, uh, is the, the big thing and um, you know, like, I would have loved that, to see some of them over the summer when we were handing out kits and doing the reading program stuff virtually, but I haven't seen any of them um, or their um, guardians, so. I mean, they have bigger, bigger issues than getting to the library at this point, but uh, so it'll be a lot of um, re-reminding staff, like how we interact and uh, re-reminding myself, um, you know, what we do in, in situations like that, so. Uh, that's kind of the gist of what I was gonna talk about tonight. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I have uh, one question. Um, I know you had mentioned the practicum student.
Yes.
That, is that a program that you plan to have continuing through the library?
Yes. Yes, uh, so, um, uh, I had somebody actually, um, who was uh, planning on working with us in the spring and then she just emailed me like two weeks ago to say that uh, her, one of her program instructors has a research project that she's gonna help her on, so. And then, of course, like I had to turn somebody else away because I was like, oh, no, we already have somebody, but they, um, there's a practicum fair that they're gonna do virtually this year in January that, um, I believe I already signed up for, but I have to check on that. I have to tell you, like, I know everyone's brains are a little bit mushy, um, because of everything, but like, having had COVID, um, this really does something to your brain, so there are, I think I'm mostly back to normal, but there are certain things where I'm like no memory of, so uh, I just got an email reminder, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna check on that tomorrow. Uh, but yes, I would love to have another student back. Kristen, oh, she was so good, I like, I the bar for her is like way up here, so you know, everybody else, I'm a little, a little nervous about what they can do, but um, yeah, I would, I would love to have uh, somebody else back. And there seems to be several, you know, people that are interested in understanding that um, the connection between library work and social work is um, pretty close nowadays, so um, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll get somebody and it'll be fine.
Yes, my other question is, I, I love seeing this, um, you know, moving out from places like healthcare and such to the community and helping in so many ways. Is there anything we can do as a board to help support you?
Um, I think just like, you know, spreading the word that, you know, the library is, um, it's a place for everybody and I think the more the kids of different backgrounds can interact in like a neutral place, that's not school or sports, is um, you know, pretty helpful and um, you know, I think that uh, the, there's a big chunk of the community that has no idea, um, what happens in the library and sometimes when they come in, they're like, is it so loud and why are these kids everywhere? And oh, my god, where are their parents? And it's like, you know, so it's like educating people that like, well, here's the thing, like, not every family looks like yours and you know, the librarians are doing the best they can to, you know, if you, if you want your community to be successful, man, you need to like, help these kids be successful and it's, it really is like, libraries are not all about reading anymore. I mean, I would love that, I would love to be able to like, you know, have a little book group and like, you know, have, and I think I, we can have that, but also we have to have like, you know, there's, there's other things and, so like the neighborhood nest group. Like, I've never seen any of those kids in the library before, but I did plant a seed of like, oh, you know, if you guys need any books to like, you know, if you're interested in doing like a book group. So I, I did just give them each um, copies of um, the, two of the books that we gave out for summer reading prizes because we had a lot left, because I ordered a lot, thinking, I don't know what I was thinking. Um, so they each got a copy and they're gonna do like a virtual book club with their um, mentor person. Um, and so like, planting those seeds that like, oh, you know, the, we got that from the library and um, that just that we're a resource and we can, you know, kind of like what Jenny was saying with the vaccination stuff, it's like, you know, I'm, I'm not interested in It's like, you know, I'm, I'm not interested in being like the end-all, be-all, but I am interested in being, you know, a connector for people. So I think that's something that we're, that we're really doing well. So. That's all I've got. It was a lot.
Does anybody else have any questions?
No, I just wanted to say thank you.
Yes. Absolutely, no, we're, we're carrying on the best that we can.
Sounds great, thank you.
All right, I will see you guys later.
Sounds great, have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Yeah. All right, um, for the last part of our meeting would be the policy review for the sex offender policy review. Did anybody have any suggestions for, um, revisions, updates, questions, concerns?
No, none.
None, okay. Does anybody wanna make a motion to approve the policy again as written?
I make a motion to approve the policy.
There a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Perfect, so that, um, passes as written again for this year. Um, is there any old business that we need to address?
No, I don't think I remember any.
Hey, I didn't have anything written down. And then any new of its, new business that we need to touch base on? And so our next meeting, um, we have it in there incorrectly for December. Our next meeting will be, it's like the eighteenth of January. Um, and unless there's anything else, does somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
My second.
Thank you. All right, meeting adjourned, and thanks.